Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. So we're about to get this meeting started. My name is Kenyatta Johnson. Thank you for the love and support. I represent the Second Councilsomatic District. I want to welcome you to our City Council and Community Budget Town Hall meetings. The host of this evening is your councilwoman, the mighty Third Councilsomatic District. Harady, Councilmember at Large. Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember from the Ninth Councilsomatic District, Councilmember Anthony Phillips. Minority Whip of the Working Families Party, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
He's a great, you're the best.
And also, we are joined by Councilmember at Large Rue Landau. Let's give her a round of applause. I know, I don't think we got that much type of love anywhere. This is about our fourth or fifth Town Hall meeting. And so, but seriously, we want to thank everybody for coming out here as we continue our Town Hall meeting to discuss your recommendations on how we address your concerns in our FY25 proposed budget. Small disclaimer, I am no... I'm not a stranger, I'm from West Philadelphia. I used to live on 827 North June Street. I went to Our Mothers of Sorrows, Sister Claire Muhammad, and James Rhodes. Yeah, James Rhodes, right? But my family history, you know, is in South Philly, you know, where I'm born and raised. But, you know, I never take a moment to not talk about the opportunity that my mom gave me when we moved to Mill Creek, 46th Street, June Street. And so, it's truly an honor and privilege to be here. Now, what I'm going to do, before we get started, I'm going to turn the microphone over to... Let me acknowledge, I know there are a couple individuals in here. I want to acknowledge the Honorable Janie Blackwell. Give her a round of applause. Now, I'm gonna have the councilwoman acknowledge her ward leaders. I do have some members from the Southwest Leadership Group, which is... I'm gonna let you acknowledge your ward leaders, because they take care of your business.
Sure thing. Well, we acknowledge the Honorable Janie Blackwell, Ward Leader of the 46th Ward. But also, joining us tonight is Ron Waters, Leader of the 3rd Ward. Pete Wilson, Leader of the 6th Ward. Dwayne Drummond, Leader of the 24th Ward. I saw Greg Benjamin here, Leader of the 51st Ward. He's around here somewhere. I feel like that's it. And I know we have many committee people in the room, so we thank all the board leaders and the committee people for everything that you do for the community every day and for coming tonight. And the block captains. Thank you for the, to the block captains, too. And all of the community leaders, because I know the people who took time to do this out tonight, this is just one thing that you're doing. You're doing so much in our communities every day, and we thank you. And I want to thank our council president for making this opportunity available to us. This is what good governance is, right? The city budget defines how we're going to allocate resources over the next year, right? And whatever lands in that budget determines how our communities are going to be supported. And so, it's really important that we're out here with you, hearing directly from you on what you want to see. I know there are already some things that I'm fighting for, right? I'm fighting for more resources for property tax relief, right? So that we can make sure that our people don't get pushed out by taxes they can't afford. I'm fighting to rebuild 70 new units of housing at the University City Town Home site. Some of you who have been following this saga knows that after a very lengthy court battle, we won $3.5 million for those 70 families. But we also won a portion of that site. And it's very important that we build new housing there, because it's important that working-class people can live in University City. I'm fighting for our Parks and Rec Centers so that our young people have safe, fun things to do, right? And so, I know a part of the agenda, but you all are going to inform the rest of the agenda. And I really thank you for being here tonight. And with that, I'll pass it back to our council president. And I also want to thank my colleagues for, thank you so much for taking the time out to be here and to come interact with our community tonight. We really appreciate you.
I want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Jamie Gotti. Just so people will know, we're doing a budget process in the daytime, but we're also out and about in the community in the evening, listening into your issues and concerns regarding this budget process. And so, we're going to get to the matter at hand. I'm going to turn the microphone over to the Chief Financial Officer of City Council. Her name is Helen Lawheer. She's going to give a brief overview of the proposed... And this is one everybody can understand. The budget proposal that you're about to see is nothing but a proposal. It's a proposal from the administration. Members of the council will come up with our own priorities based upon your feedback, your issues, and your concerns. And there will be a negotiation process between the administration and members of council. And the goal was to come out with a product that's equitable for everyone and fiscally sound. So with that being said, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Helen Lawheer. And then, and then, and then we will have opportunities for you to come to the microphone. Your name will be called. You'll be given two minutes. We want you to get to the bottom of your question. I'm gonna say it again. Please get to the bottom of your question. You only have two minutes, so don't take two minutes and 30 seconds before you ask your question. We're just saying, because we want to give as many people an opportunity possible to come to the microphone before our time is up that we have to utilize this building. Is that okay? Is that all right? Okay. Helen?
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to walk us through a brief presentation, talking a little bit about what our budget is and what's included in the budget. And as the council president mentioned, this is the proposed budget from the mayor. And so, we're going to walk through what's included in that and then turn it over to you all to tell us what you like about it or what you think is missing from that proposal. So when we talk about a city budget, and Councilmember Gotti said this really well, the city budget reflects the priorities. And really, how decisions are made each year impact the programs and services that are available to its residents. And that's why it's so important to hear from you all about what programs and services you would like to see. It is a key fact that we have to have a balanced budget. So that means we can't spend more than we have in our bank. So we have to really make some trade-offs about what we prioritize in this budget, because we can't fund everything. When we talk about our budget, we often talk about two different types of budgets. One is the operating budget, which funds our day-to-day services. This includes things like trash collection, employee payroll. And then, we also talk about our capital budget. And this budget funds long-term infrastructure investments, things like our rec centers, large vehicles, like our fire engines. So these are investments that are pretty big, and they're going to last over a long period of time. Some of the budget highlights from the mayor's proposal is that it includes $850 million in operating spending and new investments over five years, and $1.4 billion in capital investments. These investments are targeted in some of these key areas like public safety, clean and green initiatives, economic opportunity, housing, education, and core support services. That means our government kind of those backend services. This proposal keeps our taxes flat, so there's no increase, but there aren't any cuts either. So the operating budget, as it's proposed for this upcoming year, is $6.2 billion in revenue. So that means our taxes, our fines and fees, what the city will collect. And it's $6.29 billion in spending. And this budget includes $143 million of new spending, with the largest portion going towards the clean and green initiatives. And we'll talk through a little bit more of examples. The capital budget, again, that's the budget that funds our long-term infrastructure investments, is $6.08 billion and includes nearly $300 million in new spending. The largest portion of that goes towards public safety investments. Some of the larger investments that are included in this plan, that are $100 million and over, so these are our biggest ones, include street paving, nearly $500 million in street paving over the next five years, significant investment in parks and rec facilities, additional funding to the school district, additional funding to SEPTA, and funding for triage and wellness facilities. I realize it's probably very hard for you all to read that from where you're sitting, but we all have handouts, and I'll just go over some of the highlights from each section. So examples of clean and green initiatives includes large investments in residential and corridor cleaning programs. That includes the PHL Taking Care of Business Program and expanded residential cleaning in each council manic district. And some of our public safety investments, there's a large investment of $43 million for a new forensic lab. If we're looking at investments in our housing, I'll highlight here investments in programs such as Turn the Key, Restore Repair Renew, and the Basic Systems Repair Program. Some of the investments in our education is the $119 million increased support to the school district, as well as increased support in renovations to our city's libraries. Examples of economic opportunity investments, again, includes expanding the PHL Taking Care of Business Corridor Cleaning Program, but also includes a nearly $14 million investment into PHL Open for Business Process to streamline how businesses operate within the city. And then, examples of core support investments include increased support to our fleet, so to replace some of the city's vehicles, but also support to our Office of Human Resources to help the city staff up. Right now, about one in five positions within the city is vacant. And so, that office needs some support to be able to increase hiring. And then, here we have some QR codes if you all want to scan to take the survey. But with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the council president to get us started with hearing from you all. So thank you.
First person we asked to come to the mic, I'm going to give the first four people. Dee Dee Dukes, no, I'm sorry, Dee Dukes, Bridget Powell, Edward Hanson, and Lynette.
Good evening, Council President Johnson, to city council members, and most importantly, to all our citizens. This is too loud. So I'm the president of the Winfield Community Neighborhood Association. I'm also the vice chair of the Philadelphia Cross-Town Coalition, and I sit on a board of mastery charter school. I hold other positions that are not so important right now. I have five quick issues that I want to address. So RCOs, registered community RCOs and nonprofit organizations, please support proper funding to support community engagement efforts that most leaders are paying out of our own pockets, legislation that protects RCOs, zoning reform, education. We need RCOs to be supported by district council members, meetings that include, but not limited to, collaboration, fairness, and in the selection of coordinating RCOs, district council offices who make those decisions, adherence to zoning rules, rules, and transparency. Number two, I'm a block captain on the 5400 Block of Moore Street. In 2014, we applied to have our trees maintained and trimmed. In 2017, we had all departments come out. In 2024, we have never had our trees trimmed. That provides safety hazards, and we've complained over and over again. Our neighbors have had to spend $1,500 to $3,000 removing their own trees and resemening their property. We need some help. As a mastery charter board member for over five years, I've been advocating for fairness, fairness and equality, equitable funding. I'm recently set as a member of the panel for nominating, on the nominating board. I am very happy at most of the selection, but I'm absolutely opposed to any member who cannot treat our children fairly. I'm a middle school teacher, of fifth to eighth graders, not standing for it. So they gotta be treated fairly. MLK Drive, safe, stress-free, accessible, convenient driving. Absolutely opposed to closing MLK Drive year-round. And last and certainly but not least, Save Birth Shalom. It is a senior residence. It is pathetic what is happening at that building. We need you council people to save that building so that our seniors, our veterans, are not put out in the street. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I don't think I'm a stranger to most of you. My name is Bridget Powell. I thank you for having this evening session so that I could attend and do my job during the daytime. I'm a school nurse of 28 years, a Girl Scout leader of over 25. So when I say I love the children, I truly do. I work in high school, and they're the best kids. But I'm here today to say that we need to get rid of these COA umbrella agencies. Many of you know I've been in a fight since 2016 with my family against COAs. And I understand the importance of DHS. I'm a mandated reporter, I make those calls. But what I experienced as a family member, no family should ever experience. What I experienced then, after that, as a foster parent, no one should ever have to experience. So all the money that you want to put to make five new COAs, I think we should strengthen DHS and put everything back under DHS like it was prior to Danielle Kelly, and I'm quite aware of what happened. But recently, two toddlers were murdered in foster care. We lost a foster parent, Renee Gilier, who was killed by someone placed in her home. And these lawsuits were unnecessary. So I'm going to end my speech, because I don't need to keep talking about it, but I really need you to consider getting rid of COAs. I'm available anytime to talk about these COAs and the tragedies and the evidence that I have to show that COAs are not really improving the outcomes of families. And that was what they were placed over a decade ago to do. Thank you.
Edward Hanson?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Edward Hanson. I'm an educator at Marion Anderson Neighborhood Academy with the school district. And I just want to talk about how in February of 2023, a state court found the current funding of Pennsylvania's schools to be unconstitutional. In that text of that ruling, Mr. Munson, former CFO of the School District of Philadelphia, has quoted saying, "We spend almost the least in the state despite having the highest need in the state." Governor Shapiro promised around $300 million in addition to school funding to Philadelphia as a result of that ruling. But, and I'm sure the budget is counting on that money as it stands. But it appears that that money might get held up due to Shapiro's desire to institute a school voucher system in the states, or in our state. So I'm wondering, is the council prepared to make up for that, you know, potential shortfall that that would cause in the expected budget? Or in so many terms, like, are you prepared to fight for our students' civil rights, essentially?
Yes.
Yes? That's it?
I was looking for the chairperson of, the vice chair of education.
Yeah. But just yes?
Yeah, we were advocating fighting for civil rights.
Okay, well...
I mean, we have been advocating and will continue to before we even got to this proposal, which I think is like the best proposal that I've seen come out from the state. We worked up at the state lobbying, lobbying about all the needs, right? From the facilities to everything else that we need. And I think that we're hopeful in getting at least a good proposal, but we'll continue to fight. And then, you will see, as mentioned in the budget, there's a proposal to increase the village on the property test, which would send more money to the schools.
Yeah.
Yes, we have been and we will continue.
Okay, and just additionally, I noticed $119 million of the 284 proposed for the school budget is intended for year-round schooling. Now, 57% of our schools don't have air conditioning, so that's like not a super realistic thing to implement as things stand. And also, I'm pretty sure my union isn't really going to sign off on that. So if that's a non-starter, what are you guys going to do with that money? Do you have any ideas yet? $119 million, just no thoughts?
I mean, I think they're waiting for a proposal from the admin and superintendent Wobblington on how that will be implemented. I heard Dr. Wobblington say that they were putting together a financial plan for year-round schooling. So it's hard to comment on it when we don't have the details.
We don't have the details at the moment.
But it's like pretty unlikely to actually happen, right? It's not realistic.
Can I just jump in here really quick? May I, may I, friends? May I be recognized? I just think it's important to underscore, I think it's important to underscore what the president stated at the onset of this budget town hall. The city council receives the proposed fiscal year '25 budget from the administration based on their priorities. In addition to that, the School District of Philadelphia budget hearings happen tomorrow, where I anticipate we would receive additional information. It's very difficult to comment on the totality of what you would do with one pot of money over the other when we're dealing with over $6 billion just in operating. We don't have full information to give the best answer at this moment, but as we undertake this process, we will.
Okay. All right, well, that's all I have to say. Yeah, thank you for your time.
One more thing. We have Councilmember Nina Mott and Councilmember Rue Landau.
I wanted to just comment on what you were saying. The state has $14 billion, $14 billion sitting. And the governor has said, "We should be spending it." So we need to make sure we have, as my colleagues here said, have plans that show how this money needs to be used. But you have to advocate to your governor to make sure that we're the largest school district in the state, and we are deeply underfunded. And that, that $14 billion, we have a, we have a plan for it. So that's really about strategically asking for what we need the money for. And I think you're going to have a council who's going to work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, good luck on that.
Hi, Janie. All right, excuse me one second, guys. Let me pull up my notes. Good evening, City Council. My name is Lynette. First, I want to say thank you to Kenyatta Johnson for being a leader and bringing these budget hearings to the community. Now that COVID numbers has decreased, we would like to see all of our council members bring district town hall meetings back into their districts. So that's one. Today, I'd like to speak on a bill that Councilmember Jones presented in 2001, Bill 210205. This bill was to establish a program in which the city may perform certain urgent repairs and build the property owner, all under certain terms and conditions. Had this bill been funded, I wouldn't be before you today, being the voice of up to 100 depressed, exhausted, disrespected remaining seniors at Birth Shalom. Birth Shalom is a building in Winfield located at 3939 Kasha Hocken. Birth Shalom unfortunately has been ran and mismanaged by multiple slum landlords over the last decade. Since 2009, the property has been non-compliant with some of the most basic safety requirements under the Philadelphia Code, such as a proper fire suppression system. On April 11, 2019, after a decade of neglecting to bring the senior property up to code, Birth Shalom lost its rental license. Despite judges' orders, Birth Shalom has continued to illegally collect rent from seniors over the last couple of years since it's lost its rental license. So it's no surprise that that fire happened in January 2020. The building currently has a 30-day shut-off notice. If this happens, unfortunately, these residents will all soon be displaced. They have not, they have not been offered any housing resources whatsoever. They couldn't be here tonight, and they asked me to come before you today to ask for you to come meet with them, so you can hear how they have been disrespected and disregarded in the last 30 days out of retaliation, because they protest, because they wanted better living conditions. Because these seniors have been forced to pay rent, which they legally did not have to, I would like for this budget to also include reimbursement to every single senior who had to live in those deplorable conditions over the last decade. Thank you.
My question is to the board, to the panel. What are we doing about youth and gun violence? And how effective can you guys be with the financial pieces and the other, the community be with the programs that actually work? It's nice to parade around and get money, but it's, you know, you want some people to do the work, to really do the work. to really do the work.
Well, I'm gonna be real brief. I know this body has probably made the most significant investment on violence prevention, boots-on-the-ground organizations than we've ever done in the history of the city of Philadelphia. And so what we're doing this time around, I know there an issue in this proposed budget is $24 million, right? For boots-on-the-ground organizations. But we're also looking at what groups are doing effective work, right? Because we gave out a whole lot of money last year, right? And so now we had to do a reset. You probably saw a couple of articles about making sure that when we provide funding to these organizations, we're giving money to actual organizations that's actually out there day in and day out, committed to actually doing the work. So we have a, we're working with the administration regarding the evaluation process, right? But most importantly, not only evaluation process, but also helping the boots-on-the-ground organizations with their overhead and their back office support, right? Because a lot of people that's actually doing the work, they may not be experts in paperwork, right? But nevertheless, the bigger organizations that are, get the significant amount of funding, but yet they're not outside day in and day out, inside the neighborhoods, right? And so we don't want to penalize, also, we don't want to penalize people that's actually doing the work, right? We want to be supportive of them, let's give them the administrative support that they need. Because I believe wholeheartedly that that 35% decrease in the homicides and shootings that we're seeing, we may not feel it. But for the record, though, statistically, from a data-driven approach, we are down in terms of homicides and shootings. And I'm not hanging our hat on it, that means we still have a whole lot of work to do. But I attributed to, not arresting people, I attributed to investing in the boots-on-the-grounds, the credible messengers, the organizations that are out there day in and day out, helping young people not put guns, pick up guns in the first place, but most importantly, help to address that trauma. Because hurt people hurt people, and so that's what we're doing in terms of this budget process. But there's other aspects of the overall gun violence prevention approach that we also are participating in as well to address the issue. Like your councilwoman, who stepped up to the plate during the last administration. Anytime you hear somebody running around saying they call in for a state of emergency, that started with Jamie Gardier, holding the last administration accountable to make sure that we really addressed this issue with a sense of urgency. So if you hear it now, it actually started during the last administration. And so we're gonna make sure it has anytime you hear some level of teeth. And I'll say this publicly, we will not arrest our way out of this situation. We have to invest in education, we have to invest in making sure our young people have robust parks and rec opportunities to enjoy themselves. And most importantly, making sure we're investing more in the front end than the back end. Because at the end of the day, we're not going to wrestle our way out of this situation. And so being heavy-handed on the police department, and I support what they're doing, but I'm more sensitive to making sure we're doing everything we can do to make sure young people don't pick up guns in the first place. And we know when we see high crime, right, and gun violence, it's areas of high poverty, predominantly black and brown neighborhoods, and that's where we need to invest at.
Everything that the president said, and the only thing I'll add is, I think if we really want to see gun violence go down among our young people, we have to address the Juvenile Justice Services Center. We're seeing some of those tired young people in the city cycling in and out of that center. We're not helping them. And so I think we have to do a lot more to improve the condition, to improve the programming, and to have program, and community diversion programs and other programs that can stop youth from going to detention in the first place. So that's a focus for me, particularly because it's a diversion.
And I have a follow-up. What are, what are you guys doing as checks and balance systems for these organizations? And they must be visible, you know? We in the hood, they must be visible.
I just, I just mentioned that to you, and so we're gonna wrap up that question. Again, we're working with the administration, a young man named Adam Gare, who's Director of Public Safety, to make sure as we move forward, right? We evaluate organizations based upon the actual work that they're doing. I want to be upfront with them on one aspect. Not every organization has to be boots-on-the-ground. That doesn't mean that they're not actually doing the work. Some people better at being on the ground, right? But you have some women that want to be on the inside doing one-on-one mentoring with the young ladies that's carrying guns. They may not want to be outside on the street. I think more than men should be holding down our neighborhoods and our blocks, right? But that doesn't mean that if you have an after-school program, if you have a violence prevention athletic basketball league, that they're not actually doing the same type of work. So I'm not pigeon-holding. We have to get out the mindset that everybody got their one solution. I think it takes comprehensively, everybody doing what they can and putting it on the table. Would I do agree with you on? We shouldn't be funding people with no results, that I do agree, right? We shouldn't be giving away a check because it's a hookup, or you know somebody in the administration and they get the check. So I'm gonna wrap up on that, and I'm gonna ask for Nina Maad. Dr. Nina Maad.
Yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you for that question. I think we need to have lens on this issue as a public health epidemic. And when you call it a public health epidemic, you have different resources coming to the table. And one of the most important resources for our very traumatized population is mental health care. We must make sure these programs that are, you know, interrupter programs, whatever the program is, they must have access to mental health so that we can give our hurt young people a space to bring their cortisol level down in their brains in order for them to receive the services we're giving them. So it is going to be very important that we look at gun violence through a mental health and a public health lens in order to bring those resources to the table, which means federal government, state government, and local government. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As you all know, ma'am, Ms. Sawyer. I'm a committee person, block captain, town watch committee leader, okay? There's two things I want to address. In regard to budget of the $24 million, okay? Whatever happened to the money from SCOP that came from the Department of Health and Human Services, okay? Would that money be included in that budget?
I'm not familiar with that part.
SCOP was, I think it was support community organization where money from DHS, it came out of DHS to fund programs for organizations. It came out of Department of Health and Human Services.
I believe you're referring to a program that was probably, I'd estimate, 20, 30 years ago.
10, 15 years ago.
Right, and it came out of DHS's budget for discretionary spending for community organizations.
Right.
And so we'll have to investigate that to see if that line item is still there and get back to you. I know a lot of funding from DHS in that particular unit was moved to PHMC at one point, but we need to get that additional information and circle back to you.
Okay. All right, yeah, because if you're talking about money in that budget, that should be included in that budget to fund programs for the kids in the community. So that's very important. Another issue I wanted to bring up, I know the mayor talked about doing the triage, okay? Where apparently I found out on Election Day, a neighbor came to us telling that they're gonna put a treatment center in the 700 block of South 58th Street. That's not gonna happen, okay? There should be no triage, nothing placed on, in residential streets, okay? So whatever y'all do, find somewhere else to put them, okay? All right, I'm done.
I don't know what you are referring to, but I can refer this way in public.
Okay, yeah, because I did refer the issue to Andrew in your office. So I'm just letting you know, it's not gonna happen. In the community, it's just not gonna happen, because we will fight. Okay. Yes, okay.
Ms. Macy. Velvet Lewis. Latise Spence.
Oh, you calling them the lineup?
Yeah. And Hillary Blacker. Mr. Macy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna be really brief. I just came.
Speaking out loud, Mr. Macy.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, we do.
I'll be really brief. I just came to ask two quick questions and give a thank you. First, to thank you to Ms. Gardier, Councilwoman Gardier. About two years ago, I reached out to her, and I told her I was a new developer, and I'd like to take half of everything I touch and take 100% of the profits and sow it back into the community. She said, "Oh, really?" She said, "I'm gonna put you in touch with Mr. Goodman, Andrew Goodman." To make a long story short, he did. And shortly, hopefully, this next land bank meeting, you'll be hearing about the development. But the questions I had to ask is two. One, can I have some of that money for development? Number two, can you all please help me contact the mayor? Because she says she wanted private businesses to step up. And one facet is, I reached out to HUD in Washington before Ms. Fudge stepped down. She put me in touch with Robert Ford, who happens to be from Philadelphia, 19th and Siskahanna. And he said, "Mr. Macy, we don't give funds directly to entities." He said, "I know, I understand, I just need you to expedite things when you see my name." Because if I could get some of the government funding, that means if I build for 100% using government funding, why can't we put the prices exactly where the people need them? It's 100% profit just about. There's plenty of room for that. So we should start having, I want to start a new trend in the city, where me and I have like-minded individuals that's in my network. We'll develop currently, we set out for 30 properties a district. The first 30 have been cleared. And the fifth district, dolphin to Balcomblin, 18th to Broad, vacant lots. So we'll be developing those properties, and 100% of 50 of them will go into an irrevocable trust and spread throughout the community via the Vex Centers, et cetera, et cetera. The only thing I need now is to contact the mayor and stay in touch with Andrew, so we can get the ball rolling and expedite things a little more.
And you've been for basically progress on starting a recruitment of land bank processes. Very difficult, but we want to find particularly black and brown developers that are wanting to save the benefits of our community. We would be happy to give you information on city resources to support housing and give you the contact and the mayor's office.
Awesome, thank you.
It's Velvet, Ms. Velvet Lewis. The Joy Squad, that's what I'm talking about. Amen.
Good evening. My name is Velvet Lewis. I'm a mother of three young ladies and a grandmother of seven children. I'm a graduate of Strawberry Mansion High, and I live in West Philly. Today, I am speaking as a large member of Lift Every Voice Philly and Black Needed Parents Membership Organization. We are united across schools, race, and neighborhoods to demand urgent actions on our schools. Last year, Lift Every Voice LEV parents were deeply concerned with the absence of school nurses. But through collective action, we moved the school district to adopt more aggressive higher plan. Now nearly every school has a nurse. I am speaking today in support of a joy-based budget to support our children's well-being and mental health and urgent and serious need for change in our schools. I want every adult in this room to remember what it was like to be a child and ask yourself if these are acceptable experiences for children. My grandchild, a third grader, like 1,000 other children across the school district, is not allowed to talk at lunch. During recess, there are no structures, and chaotic, and boring. There are no supplies, no balls, no jump ropes, and no staff to organize the games. One day, my grandson came home and told me that he did not want to go back to a school. He said that the teacher yelled at him in front of the, front of the class, and that was his, that he was scared. When I asked him what he did, he told me, he said he was trying to tell the teacher that somebody was pushing in line and she went off on him. The next day, when I went to talk to the teacher, she apologized. But her apology doesn't take away the fact that my grandson was humiliated in the front of the class, or that the class had to see it. It hurt his feelings and his self-esteem. I told her, "You can't treat our children that way. You take, you take children to the side and you just don't yell at them." I like for our school staff to be able to approach our children and meet children on their level. We need to change our school and rethink the way we treat our children, but especially our black children. Schools have to be places that celebrate and support our children's childhood. Incidents like these are why we are calling for the district to hire a chief of joy to examine the climax in our school, develop a policy, implement programs, and provide training and development to promote health and joyful learning environment. We are also asking for the district to expand staff teams so that district children and family have access to mental health resources and support to assure their emotional well-being. Right now, the city allocate over 40% of district budget. I am calling on the city council to publicly declare our support for Lift Every Voice Philly and demand a joy-based budget.
Latise Spence.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Latise Spence. Today, I'm here speaking as an at-large member of Lift Every Voice Philly, a black-led parent membership organization. We are united across schools, race, and neighborhood to demand urgent action for our schools. We believe that when parents are united and working together to support all of our kids, we can transform our schools. I, myself, have a child at Houston Elementary. I'm speaking today in support of our joy-based budget at a time when nationally and specifically here in Philadelphia, we are facing major mental health and attendance crisis for school-aged kids. On a personal note, I will share that my daughter Nora is a rule follower. But at the same time, she likes a good joke, just like the rest of us. And on a particular day at school, she was laughing, enjoying her time in this particular special when other two kids were doing some funny things. And I received a message from her teacher that Nora was disruptive, that she was behaving poorly, that she was inappropriately dancing, and that she was receiving a bad, bad grades for the day, was excluded from those activities for that day. When I reached back out to understand what was happening, I was met with silence, no response whatsoever. When I talked to my daughter about this, she explained to me that she was being silly and that she herself was going along for the ride with her other classmates, and that the exercises, inappropriate dance move with her being silly with her intro exercise move for the day. What I, why I tell you that story is, the point of is how the lack of joy that's being stripped from our children has huge impacts. Me, as a parent, as I engage with my daughter after hearing a teacher say that about my daughter, my daughter, who is embarrassed in front of her classmates because she's being pushed aside for simply being silly, this is not acceptable, this isn't a condoning for any of... this can, this is not acceptable. This isn't a condoning for any of the other parts of your budget in which you wish to promote. It doesn't support public safety. It doesn't support economics. It doesn't support any of it. We need to bring joy back to our kids. And so today, I'm asking you, uh, right now, the city allocates 40% of the district's budget. I'm calling on every city council member to become, to publicly declare your support for Lift Every Voice Philly's demand for a joy-based budget. Our joy-based budget takes two critical actions to invest in joy right now. First, you appoint a chief of joy who's charged with conducting a comprehensive joy audit. This is dismantling dehumanizing practices, designing policies that uphold the humanity and dignity of children, establishing new and developmental appropriate standards, and guaranteeing that recess, rest, arts, music, and enriching experiences are top of mind. And lastly, we're asking that you expand STEPS. This provides crucial behavioral, behavioral health interventions and supports students, families, teachers, and schools. So right now, I'm asking the question, will all of you publicly declare your support for Lift Every Voice and a public budget for joy for our kids?
I, I do got one quick comment, right? And we're going through the process, and I just learned about this joy budget the other day and the chief joy officer. And I'm processing it, right? I wonder where y'all were at when I was little, when they had the paddle, but that's a different conversation. But on a serious note, I went to pick my son up from school about a week ago, right? And when I went to pick him up, I saw that he was crying, right? And so I'm not the council president in that space. I'm dad, right? And I asked him why he was crying and then, you know, he pointed to the teacher and told me what happened. And that school teacher was somewhat dismissive and so I, you know, had to address the situation, right? But he had kicked, he had, they were playing kickball, right? They call it, we call it dodgeball. Dodgeball, kickball. And somebody got kicked and, you know, the ball hit the person in the face. But he had a real, a real meltdown because they gave him a five-minute timeout, right? And it was an accident, though. He said he didn't do it on purpose. So now I'm really like comprehending his experience because I know my child, right? Like, any parent, you know your child. And I know my child, what he's about, how he go about doing things. So this does give me an opportunity to kind of really comprehend what y'all are saying from a totally different perspective in terms of how they dealt with the situation. Because he didn't, he didn't understand why he was being penalized at a five-minute timeout. Well, first of all, he said, "Dad, we playing kickball." Somebody gonna, you gotta kick the ball, right? And it wasn't on purpose. I didn't intentionally try to hurt this person. So I'm really like taking in what you're saying. I just want to acknowledge that I see you and I understand on what you're saying in terms of us looking at it from a total non-disciplinarian, but at the same time, addressing an issue, but from a different joy perspective. So, go ahead. Go ahead, Hillary.
Thank you. I have a very similar story to that, President Johnson, so. Well, good evening. My name's Hillary Blacker. And as you might be able to tell, I'm also a member of Lift Every Voice, a black-led parent membership organization united across schools, race, and neighborhood to demand urgent action on our schools. My third grader is a student at Penn Alexander School. And I want to speak today about how our public schools are failing to meet children's developmental and emotional needs, exacerbated by the losses and challenges experienced since the start of the pandemic. My child is part of an entire generation of children that missed out on critical years of learning and emotional development. While the world may have moved on from the pandemic, the learning loss has not moved on from our kids. Like thousands of other children, my child was in lockdown during his kindergarten year. Kindergarten, the year when children learn to create community with their classmates, a year in which children learn to take turns to share and to handle conflicts. My child's notion of taking turns in kindergarten was a mute button. While some schools, like my child's, have added social, emotional learning electives, similar to a gym period, it's not enough. Children need, need time to try out what they're learning in these classes. And where do they try it out? At recess. Yet, my nine-year-old has shared that in his 45 minutes for both lunch and recess, recess often is only 12 minutes. When my child tells me again that last month at recess, he and his classmates couldn't figure out how to kick around a ball, they were told they couldn't play soccer for two weeks. I know they need more time and more help. When's the last time you had 12 minutes to do anything and to have it already figured out? The rules, the teams, the expectations? The outcome is children either feeling like they consistently fail at creating something or learning to blame others for their inability to play. Right now, the city allocates over 40% of the district's budget. And I'm calling on all of you to publicly declare your support for Lift Every Voice Philly's demand for a joy-based budget. Our joy-based budget takes two critical actions to invest in joy. The first is a chief of joy who is charged with conducting a comprehensive joy audit. The audit is a critical roadmap to dismantle dehumanizing practices, design policies that uphold the humanity and dignity of children, and establish new and developmentally appropriate standards and guarantees for recess, rest, arts, music, and enriching experiences. The second is to expand the Support Team for Educational Partnership, which is the STEPS initiative, which provides crucial behavioral health interventions and support to students, families, teachers, and schools. I know that if my child's school, one of the best-funded in the district, isn't getting this right, then it's unlikely that other neighborhood schools with fewer resources and greater needs are getting it right. I'm proud to be a part of a group of parents across schools in this district who are demanding greater focus on making sure kids have time to be kids, on ensuring they have the support and tools and time to practice critical developmental skills. We have launched a joy-based budget campaign to prioritize the mental health and well-being of our kids. Can you commit to supporting a joy-based budget for our students and our schools? If so, thank you.
We just want to ask that while people are coming up, um, asking their questions, uh, if we could just keep it down, please?
Uh, hello, if I can start?
Hey, Mr. Horace.
Hey, 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 hey. Glad you remember me. Uh, you talk about tax relief. Why are you raising our taxes over 100%? You know, you have given tax abatements and approvals of KODs. The school district is crying about being underfunded when 90% of the school budget goes to salaries and benefits. In the district, there is, in this district, there is only one school out of 38 that is on or above grade level. That's Sadie Alexander. This district is in an education desert. How do we get the school district to spend the money on this district? No one from the past district was aggressive enough to demand things like open all indoor pools, return driver's ed, change the landscape, and bring back junior high schools with pre-CTE curriculums, make Bartram a CTE slash trade comprehensive high school, expose all middle grades to all 13 sports and six forms of the art. The school district needs to start with the five-year plans and start doing these things overnight. It can be done when you add the people with the experience. Put me on the school board. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Horace, I mean, I think tomorrow, May 1st, they'll be swinging eight new members, and so there is an open slot in the event that you have an interest in going after the school district board position.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening to Councilman, um, Camiata Johnson, Councilwoman Jamie, uh, Jamie Gartier, and all the, uh, council members on the panel. Um, I'm a small business owner. I'm a small business owner, which you guys already know. I'm coming to City Hall, put my flyer out there, educate you guys about what I'm doing. I'm a small business owner. I'm an LLC. So as a small business owner in the city of Philadelphia, a lot of small business owners are struggling. So I'm taking money out of my budget to do training programs. I think the training programs should come from the school district of Philadelphia and not from the small business owners. Training programs should be coming from the school district of Philadelphia. I'm spending five grand, $5,000, 5K a month doing training programs with my small business. That is costing me a lot of money. Five times 12 is $60,000. So I want to know how I can bid on some of these RFPs, request for a proposal bidding, so I can get some funding to do some training programs. We are doing a hospitality training program. We are looking for a front of the house. So a lot of people scream at me because I'm looking for guy, folks that's 18 to 35-year-olds. I cannot train somebody, someone that's 14, 15, 16 years old working at the Hilton, Sheraton, Double Trees, Marriott, uh, Lowe's Hotel. We can't do that. So I, I have a lot of people coming to me, asking me to train the young people. However, we can't train folks that's under 18 years old. We are serving liquor at your wedding, your birthday, your reception. We serve in liquor. So in the state of Pennsylvania, you have to be 18 years old to work at the wine and spirit store as a cashier. So that's the reason why we want folks to be 18 years old or older to be a part of my training program. So I've been doing my training program since 2015. So let's do that math way back from 2015 to now, which is costing me $60,000 a year doing training programs. Where we can do the training programs in our public school system. The school district of Philadelphia is getting all this money. We need to put some pressure on our governor because he gonna be running for reelection pretty soon. So he need to put some more money. And the city of Philadelphia, he gave $350 million to Scepter. He built that in I-95 when it burnt down and created them jobs over there. We have to create more jobs in the black and brown community so we can stop this gun violence and then the problem be solved. So that's what we need to do.
I agree.
We need to fix this problem in every district in the city of Philadelphia. And every small business along the business corridors can do training programs, but we don't have no money to do these programs and it's costing me a whole bunch of money to do my program. We need more money. So what can I do to bid on some of these RFPs? And Councilman, um, Camiata Johnson, you've mentioned about folks that's constantly getting this money over and over and over and ain't doing nothing, uh, with the money.
So two things.
So there's $24 million.
Two things.
How can we tap into on that?
I'm ready to tell you right now, bro. The Office of Violence Prevention call, has a grant program called Community Expansion Grant, right? Look it up. I mean, you're currently taking applications. You apply. Where you live at? This your area?
Manchuria.
I'm at, uh, I'm in, uh, the third councilman of the district.
Just follow up with your councilwoman after you put your application. The administration does the, the valuation, right? But I'm sure she would be supportive of your efforts as long as your T's cross, your I's dotted, your program is violence prevention-related. And then also, from a purely business standpoint, look up the Commerce Department as well to see what type of funding that they have.
You work the City Commerce Department?
City Commerce Department, yes.
Been there and did that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask you to do it again. And then after you do it again,
Okay, because we're on the new administration.
Follow up with your councilwoman, right? And then we'll see what type of support that we can advocate on your behalf through the Commerce Department. And it is a new administration and the, and the new Commerce, and the Commerce Department has a new vision. And I would think that under this process, matter of fact, part of this budget, the administration has pledged, um, $10 million for apprenticeship programs. Seven up, $7 million is going toward community college. The other $3 million from on this thing is going toward apprenticeship-related programs, not just the building trades, but just in general, apprenticeship-related programs. So I'll work with your council member to explore that opportunity.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We gotta wrap it up, bro. We got a super, five pages right here.
Can I do one last thing here?
We answered your question.
One last thing. It's gonna be two seconds. Um, can we find a way to put some more rentals assistant money out here for these people? We need some more rental assistant money. We need more rental assistant money. We are running out of rentals assistant money and you, we ran out.
You see the music today, so go ahead.
Talk to the governor. Y'all gotta get some money from him. He want to run for reelection. We need to put some pressure on that, on Governor Josh Shapiro and put some more money in rentals assistance for the city of Philadelphia.
We're pushing for $50 million in rentals assistance.
Do 100. They had to do it. 100.
Got you. Thank you, Lamont. We appreciate it.
We need more rental assistant funding in the city.
Thank you, bro.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, just read what I wrote. We need a stoplight at 40th and Havreford in Preston. I've been to Committee of One. There's a whole lot of housing. Luckily, the street is broken up. It's not about whether there are accidents. It's about who's gonna pay for the stoplight. We don't need bumps. We got four developments. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. Um, I don't want nobody to get killed and then get a stoplight put up. I've been at this development since 2017. And when I'm home, I hear it. So I can imagine what happens when I'm not home. So we can get the street light up before they, uh, finish the street because they've been working on this since November. That would be appreciated. Um, in terms of the rec centers, can we ask the children what they want to do? Because I'm almost 60. I don't know what a 17-year-old want to do. So if we can ask them what they want in these rec centers, then I think those young people will be more successful. And, um, as a special advocate, I want to, um, say that ask for the rec centers to be accessible for those with physical and neurodiverse needs and that programs can be put in those areas so everybody can stop waiting for the carousel house to be rebuilt. Like, that's the answer to everything. Um, please give more money to CBH and DBH IDS um, to provide supports and services for those with mental health challenges and those living with disabilities. Um, I have no secret. I have a child, an adult with a disability, had to call 988 twice because I'm older now and I just couldn't handle it. Um, and, and finally, please hold the school district of Philadelphia accountable for what we spend. Um, if you watch, well, I'll, I'll be a civilian on Wednesday, but I say no to a lot of stuff because I don't have a quote. I'm not voting for an $82 million anything without a breakdown of numbers. And there was a $6.5 million ask for some Band-Aids and some guards. I'm not doing that. But my peers at the time went on. Um, so my request is, maybe the education committee does it. Um, have this stuff quarterly because the state only gives the, all the 500 districts money four times. Give it to us in July, then December, and then April. I don't know how y'all disperse the money, but if you do it that way, get an accountability and they not doing what your constituents think, you don't say we ain't gonna give it to you. You just say we gonna put a pause on it until we see some things. And then I'm, I'm gonna wrap it up. And then maybe that'll get the ball rolling. It won't, I hope y'all won't be seen as, "Oh, y'all not for the kids." Well, y'all all for the kids. That's why I saw Ms. Gilmore Richardson. She was at a school, um, doing a school visit. And I saw Mr. Anthony, Mr. Phillips, I'm sorry, before he left. He was at a school. Um, so I know y'all care, but please, let this be the council that holds the Board of Education and the school district accountable. And like I said, just put a pause on the money. Don't say, until your memberships and your constituents get what they need to educate our scholars. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
And, and Cecilia, I just want to, um, thank you for, um, your leadership. Most people may, may not know Cecilia Thompson is a current board member advocating for, um, the people. And we just want to make sure that, uh, one, is accountability. Two, we addressing the issue of lead and asbestos in our schools. No children should have to go into an environment when a school is closed down because they're inhaling toxics. And most importantly, making sure the environments of the schools that they go into are conducive are conducive for children learning in. And most importantly, we still to this day do not have a facilities plan. And so we will continue advocating and making sure that our young people get the type of support that they need. Thank you.
I wanted to add in to give in Cecilia her flowers. She has been an amazing school board member over the past half a year. She is a... I'll tell you guys a little story, a very good story. I'll tell you guys a little story. So last June, we finally got the school board to vote to allocate eleven million dollars to reopen, to renovate and reopen the Sarah Room. However, however, that was the second time that vote was taken. We, the vote was taken the year before to invest money in the Sarah Room, and Cecilia was the only board member who voted yesterday. She was the only board member. Thank you for holding us down.
My pleasure.
I'm gonna wrap it up. All right. Um, Lynette, was this LaZona?
Public speaking is not my forte. I just heard about this an hour ago. But I was a school nurse for twenty-six years, and since two thousand and eleven, when they let a hundred nurses go, um, was when I retired and started working with BSN students at Jefferson and Penn, putting them in schools all over the city. And I can't tell you how tired I was writing of Jefferson, every single paper for a hundred sixty students when they had their day in the school, how our children are worth it, and how can Abington and Lower Marion spend ten thousand dollars more per child when Sadie Alexander gets one thousand dollars more and some extras? And look at the difference the money makes.
Speaking of truth.
We do not need to continue with the school to prison pipeline. We need to give these kids hope. We're in this building, and I'm in, with Penn, I'm in Forest, uh, Metta Center Schools. If we were in Sayar High School, we would not have the air conditioning. We would not be in the state-of-the-art auditorium. But they do have an amazing CTE, and we need more CTEs and help. And they have even a young lady that's in medical school now. We need to have things that are research-based. Smaller class size works. More adults that really make a difference to the kids, and really listen to the work. We need behavioral health services in the schools, not only for the children, but after-school for the families too.
Thank you, ma'am. Marky G., Eric Wilson, and Charles, is that Lanier? So Marky G., is that? Oh, no. Um, that's, you're Melina. I know you're Melina. It's not Melina though, it's Maria G., Maria G. Lightning, Eric Wilson, Charles Lanier, Asantwara, and Kuma Touré. Touré, after Kwame and Kuma.
Good evening.
No, ma'am, we on the third, we, we, we had, we on the third, we on the third page. We didn't get to Ms. Settles yet. We got you, Ms. Settles. We got you, Ms. Settles. Oh, we ain't gonna leave you hanging, Ms. Settles. Don't want no trouble, no, you, Ms. Settles. We got you. You're welcome. No, no, we got you, absolutely.
Good evening.
I know y'all ain't great rumble. I hope not. Okay.
Can I go now?
Go ahead, good brother.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Charles Lanier.
Hey, Charles.
How you doing, uh, council president?
One second, Charles, one second.
Sure.
Excuse me, everyone. Excuse me, everyone. Can we all just keep it down and respect the person at the microphone, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Hunting Park Neighborhood Advisory Committee. As the executive director, I'm also board president of Strawberry Mansion Neighborhood Action Center.
Can you go into the microphone?
I'm also board president of Strawberry Mansion Neighborhood Action Center and Hunting Park, uh, executive director of the NAC office.
Charles, hold, hold on just one second. Excuse me, everyone. We just gonna ask if you could be respectful of the person at the microphone, and if you do want to talk to someone, we're gonna respectfully ask if you can just take the conversation outside. I don't want no smoke, but we just trying to be respectful, because these are very serious issues. Mr. Charles, and speaking to the microphone, because other people want to hear you. There you go.
There you go. Okay. Thank you, council president. Uh, in addition to being here on behalf of the two NAC offices here, NAC offices in Philadelphia, I'm also here on behalf of Here for Climate Justice Coalition. Our coalition brings together community organizations, home repair providers, workforce and community development partners, and climate justice groups across Philadelphia to fight for safe, healthy, affordable, fossil-free housing for all. We are asking you to support full funding for the Philadelphia Energy Authority in the next budget, including five million dollars for the Philadelphia Energy Authority's Built to Last Initiative. Built to Last provides comprehensive home repairs, weatherization, clean energy upgrades for low-income Philadelphia homeowners. Also, building on the success of Philly's critical basic systems repair program, Built to Last enables people to stay in their homes, ensures their homes are safe and healthy, and reduces energy bills. The program also plays a key role in reducing fossil fuel pollution and advancing our city's climate goals. As you all know, the housing stock in the city of Philadelphia is very, very old, and many of us are in need of repairs. Built to Last will help with those repairs. A five-million-dollar investment by the city next year will be matched by more than twenty-five million dollars in federal funds. We currently have about over twelve hundred people on a waiting list for this program, and we are strongly requesting that this money be added to the budget, uh, in the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you, representatives, for being here. I'm gonna make mine short and sweet. The other night I came home, I'm on the fifty-seven-hundred block of Pine Street. It was lit up like a Christmas tree. There's brand-new lights on the street. And it was just amazing. You feel safe. So I had other things to speak about, but after listening to the pros and cons, a lot was covered. So I just wanted to say, I think we all see some improvement. The only thing of it is, we need to get these broken cars off the street.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? All right, all right, all right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Asantwara Inkrumaturé. I'm an organizer with No Arena in Chinatown, the Philadelphia Tenants Union, and the Justice for Angel Davis Now campaign. Thank you to our members of the city council. Real quickly, we must not allow our beloved Chinatown to be destroyed with a proposed Seventy-Sixers arena. Because if we allow them to destroy Chinatown, billionaires that don't even live in our city, then you can rest assured West Philadelphia would be next. This is not a playground for billionaires that live outside this city. Number two, L and I, license and inspection must have all the resources it needs to function effectively and to assure public safety. They must be able to do inspections, making sure all residential property is safe, and hold all slumblowers accountable for not having a license. We must not forget Angel Davis and Latice Bethia, two young black women who were shot during LTO evictions last year. These are young black women, mothers of young children, and they can't work right now. So how are they supposed to live between last year when they were shot and two thousand twenty-five when their court, when their case finally goes to court? How are they supposed to live? So the city of Philadelphia, I ask you, we need a fu, a national fundraising plan, Councilmember Jamie, for Latice Bethia and Angel Davis. They cannot work. They still need housing, and no human being should have to live the past year and a half on a GoFundMe. Lastly, lastly, Councilmember Jamie, two years ago, you made some calls and came to my situation when two people tried to evict me illegally from my house. But they couldn't evict me, because sister, I know Jesus and I know Malcolm X, and I know my rights. You're not gonna run me out of my house. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to urge you and your colleagues, if interim University of Pennsylvania President Jamison cannot return your calls about those encampments, then he needs to return your calls about his students who are being preyed upon by landlords in West Philadelphia. And these landlords don't have a license, and none of them can get free legal assistance from the University of Pennsylvania. How can a prestigious university like Penn not be able to afford to give their students free legal assistance? So those are the things I have for you this evening, but because I got on my cute blue shirt here, we must not have an arena to destroy Chinatown. And for all you Seventy-Sixers fans, I don't even like basketball. But when a team hasn't won a championship in almost forty years, hell no, you ain't getting no new arena.
Gretchen Stidler and Jordan Trister. Gretchen Stidler, did I miss someone? Oh, Eric Wilson, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, yes, Eric Hurst and then Gretchen.
This has been an exciting day for me. I've never been involved with anything like this before. But, um, so much is going on in this, this, this particular situation. But my issue is, well, a lot of homes are, do you, do y'all have like a proposal come up in the future? Maybe within the budget for homes that have been sitting around for ten to fifteen years, abandoned homes. Uh, we have run into that problem in my area where I'm at, and I know a lot of times it takes a while for the contact to owners or to see, but to have a process be put in, into place as soon as possible so the homes won't, um, become abandoned so long, because a lot of times, they become affected by people that shouldn't be in the property, wanting to go there, okay? But I think it should be a speed of process for that. The car issue, they just, she just got pissed dealing with that, but that's a problem that's taking down the community. You have a nice community, but two homes might be abandoned, person might have died, but it shouldn't take ten to fifteen, twenty years for the issues to be resolved. That's the biggest issue in our area.
There are a few ways to deal with that. Um, some of the vacant properties are owned by the city, the land bank, so there's a process to apply for that if you want to redevelop that property. Or whole, whole thing I took to it. Some of the homes are the, uh, the housing authorities, they have a separate process. Some of them are abandoned and leaving. Um, and share of sales have not been going on for some time to allow the city to acquire those properties, but we anticipate that share of sales will start again in summer. So we're, we're working on it, but thank you. We appreciate that it's a big issue.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gretchen Stidler. I live in West Philadelphia. I'm a writer and the mother of two children who will eventually attend Henry Sealy. Uh, I come tonight to speak against the proposed arena in Chinatown. My concern is not only that the arena will eviscerate that neighborhood in the style of the Fashion District, but that it will ultimately cost the city money that could be better spent on the city itself. As I'm sure you're all aware, an economic study published earlier this year suggests that the proposed arena could cost Philadelphia and Pennsylvania more than one billion dollars in lost tax revenue. That's a lot of money that could otherwise be invested in education, libraries, parks, housing support, healthcare services, and gun violence intervention. The same study found that the arena could cost the city five hundred and fifty-six businesses and sixteen thousand jobs. The alleged twelve thousand jobs that the arena would create to replace those lost would be seasonal and low-paid. Such economic opportunities are not the sort that facilitate financial mobility. They are the sort that entrench poverty in our city. So please, council members, don't allow Seventy-Six Place to move forward. It will enrich a handful of privileged individuals at the expense of our entire city. Thank you for your time and your presence tonight.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you all for being here. Uh, my name's Jordan Teicher. I live in West Philly. I'm a father. Um, here to talk about, uh, all, there's so many things that need to be funded in Philadelphia. You all know this. Uh, but for decades, the city has repeatedly cut taxes for corporations, real estate developers, and the rich in a failed attempt at trickle-down economics. The wealth to fix our city exists. We live in the richest region in our state and the richest country in the world. There are fifteen, fourteen, five hundred companies in the state, ten billionaires, and the biggest concentration of millionaires in the state. We need to raise taxes on them. And there are proposals out there that would do this. The Philly Wealth Tax, Councilmember Gaudier, Councilmember O'Rourke, thank you for supporting that. Also, Councilmember Brooks is not here. This would be a point-four percent tax on stocks and bonds held by the city's richest residents. They won't miss that point-four percent, but it would generate hundreds of millions of dollars. This would allow us to fund our homeless services, libraries, schools, Parks Department, et cetera. Uh, first question, uh, Council President Johnson, will you hold a hearing on the Philly Wealth Tax this year?
No, not this year at the moment.
Next year?
No, not at this moment.
All right. Uh, and then quickly, uh, a point of, uh, personal importance. Um, I'm a cyclist. I am also someone who walks to get around. Um, and I'm sick of hearing about people getting hit by cars and killed, uh, just going about their daily lives in the city and in this neighborhood. Um, recently, last week, a man was killed in the University City. Uh, we, we don't need to do this. Uh, people shouldn't be struck down the street. Um, one major tool we have for that is Vision Zero. Uh, this year, it is due for three million dollars. Um, the Kenny administration was gradually raising the funding for Vision Zero. Um, I want to ask if you will amend this proposal to increase funds for Vision Zero to three million dollars. Um, currently is, uh, slotted to decrease in funding.
Yeah, we definitely support Philly funding Vision Zero, so yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yes. And, and also, I didn't just, I don't, also, just in terms of my position regarding the wealth tax, I just always saw taxes being done at the federal level. So the whole concept was like just totally new to me, even when you just talked about, um, taxing the actual stocks and bonds. And so I just want to at least give you a, you know, at least my explanation at this particular point in time respectfully, okay?
My name is Doris Sanders Robinson. I do not drive, I do not own a car, but I would like to know how you allow the city of Phila, Philadelphia become a small New York city with all these... of Philadelphia to become a small New York city with all these rebuilding of apartments as well as other business facilities without parking lots or parking. We had nowhere to park. So that should be a notation, because some families here, we were private homes, now we're not. A one-story house, a family home, become a two-story, a two-story become a three-story, and so forth and so on. So somewhere you need to draw the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a proud citizen of the city of Philadelphia. I live where I, I love where I live, and I live where I love. Okay? My area is fantastic. We are strategically located to get to Center City in 15 minutes, 76, 95. I am blessed to be in a community where we have five, at least five modes of transportation and the regional rail. So I'm selling my neighborhood as what I know because I've been there my entire life. I'm here tonight to speak to ask an easy question. First of all is, when will our utility companies open back up to the public? That's Pico and PGW. A lot of seniors don't have cell phones or don't know how to use them to pay their bills online. And now that COVID is over, I want to know, I'm advocating for them, when will they open? Second, I said where I live at. Unfortunately, King Sessom Recreation Center and Myers have been closed down. My concern is what the summer is going to be like for our children. They have nowhere to congregate, they have no swimming pools, and to ask them to go to Stinger Square, which is in South Philly, catching the 64, or to go up to Christie is not fair to them. As we know, in the city of Philadelphia, it's TERFs all over. And so where are our children going to go? We don't even have a library. Pascal Library is closed, King Sessom Library is closed. So where is our children supposed to go?
Uh, uh, no, I want to clarify something. I'm gonna let the council member who represents the district kind of break down what Parks and Rec Plan is, but I want to be clear with everybody why King Sessom is closed temporarily, because they're building a brand-new recreation center. The reason why, just hear me out, because everybody here don't know this, the reason why the library is closed down, because we're renovating a brand-new library. Myers is in my district, we share it, but majority of it is in my district, it's shut down temporarily because we're building a brand-new state-of-the-art recreation center. So I just wanted to clarify that, just so we all will know that we are fighting and working to bring high-quality recreation centers and playgrounds and libraries to the area. Now, in terms of the actual plan, I know we had a plan that was very wrecked in South Philadelphia, and I'll turn that part over to Councilman Jamie Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. So like the Council President pointed out, the centers are closed for much-needed renovations, right? King Sessom, the library, and the Rec Center, that's going to be a 30-plus billion-dollar project, it's going to be really great for the community. And rebuild, I think, has been great for the community because the Rec Centers and the parks needed that attention. But if I had to make one criticism of the initiative and the last administration, is that it took too long and we didn't have a plan, we didn't have a plan for everything being closed at the same time, right? So now we're in this position, and so I definitely, what you said resonated with me. I tried to make sure that there was extra staff at Johnson at 47th and Woodland because I knew King Sessom would be closed. Now, obviously, Johnson doesn't have a pool, but if we want to, I'm happy to put my head together with you around what we can do as a workaround on the pool side, and I definitely take your point, we should have planned, the Kenny administration should have planned better so that everything wasn't closed at the same time. But happy to talk about what we can do now.
I'm all for progress, and I understand about them being closed, and just like you said, it was a timing that was not right. And my concern is the summer and what are these young people going to do? And we already know about the gun violence and all that, so I'm concerned about the bloodbath. It can become, because the children have nowhere to go.
You're right. But we do, I mean, maybe Christie won't work, but we have time, right? We could talk about things that we can do, and happy to have that conversation with you as always.
All right, and my last question is, I just settled everyone where I live at, but there was a resolution that was passed in 2022 regarding the community in which I live in. Not only do I live there, I'm actively involved. I consider myself a good citizen, I do. I'm a committed person, I never miss an election, I'm a block captain. But we learned about this resolution just this year, really, about Africatown and where we are and how it encompasses our area. While I am grateful to have been invited to this meeting by way of mail, I have never ever received anything to my house in the mail, nor have I ever seen it on any of anybody's literature when it was time for reelection. I like to collect stuff, I do. So I've collected everything for the last five, six years about all the flyers that have come to my house, enough to start a bonfire. And nowhere on there does it talk about a resolution being passed in 20, that city council voted on, that it affects where I live at and the constituents in my district that I have communicated with and outside, none of them know. So we are operating in the dark, don't know anything, but yet and still, this proclamation has been proclaimed on us, and we don't know what it is. And I believe, not I believe, I know that we deserve better because we've been in this community, I've been in this community 67 years, I'm 67. My mother and my father was there, and my grandfather, so I'm talking about at least 100 years, where I've come from a working-class family, tree-lined streets, blocks that were owned. We were, there were no renters on my block, so it is a stable community, and we feel as though that we are entitled and deserve to have a meeting where we can find out what this means, what are the boundary lines, who is in charge, and so, because we're in the dark, and that's what I, that's my question, and that is what I'm here to ask, and hopefully you'll be able to answer that, and we can go with a date that I can get my constituents out to Comedy School so that they can hear what's going on with this city. You cannot expect people to pay taxes to come out and vote, and it's almost like taxation without representation, and that's not fair to us. We don't deserve that.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. We're happy to set up a meeting to talk to the community and to have Akana, who is a project lead for Africatown, to talk to you and your community. Just by way of explanation, Africatown is a project that spans both of our council districts. It's a project that is highlighting all of the contribution of the African diaspora in southwest Philadelphia. So it's highlighting African and black African-American-owned businesses. There will be an affordable housing element, there will be a business development center, a cultural and performing center. It's just a way to highlight all of the diversity and the rich history that exists in our area of the city, similar to what Chinatown is in Chinatown. But you're right, there's engagement that has to be done. Akana has been having, I think, monthly community meetings on this issue, and I'm sure that they'd be happy to come out to Comedy to talk to people in an even more in-depth manner.
Just so you know, the people aren't interested in having Akana come out, and I'll tell you this, why? Because they say they voted for you. They didn't vote for an organi, let me finish, let me finish. They didn't vote for an organization that came into a community that is already established. We were there before Akana came. Like I said, we've been there 100 years. So for an organization to come in and to get almost like privilege over the existing people that were already there, it's almost like Christopher Columbus, let me finish, Christopher Columbus coming to America saying he discovered it, and the Indians were already there. I'm telling you, Councilwoman, I'm telling you, because I voted for you when a lot of people didn't. I voted for you, I put your, your plaque out on my lawn, when most people said, why ask me? Why are you voting for her? She's not going to win. I said, she is going to win. So I'm saying this to you because I have a pulse for my community, and I'm telling you how they feel, so that you're not walking and feeling like you're going to be ambushed. I want you to know how your constituents are feeling. They're feeling left out, they're feeling deserted, and they're feeling not even counted when they have been the ones who have voted historically democratic, historically, and it's like, well, where, what do we get in return for it? Not another organization that stands on somebody's shoulders of an existing people that have been there.
I got your point. I'm glad to come to the meeting. Akana has to come to the meeting because Akana is a project lead. But what I also think we have to get passed, what I hope we can get passed, are these divisions that I don't think should exist between African-Americans in our community and African immigrants and Caribbean immigrants. They are not interlopers in our community. They are, we are one community, and so I hope we can talk more about that at the meeting.
But just so you know, they don't think about it as a division. That's not what they think of it as a division. They think of it as they were here. They're not, no one is mad against Akana at all, let's get that clear, or the Caribbean, no one is that, but it's no division for them. It's about what they feel as though they've been screwed up. You said they are the lead. How did a community of 20 years become the lead of a community of 100 years? That's what they want to know.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers.
Boy, come on, and then one more, and one more.
Mama Gil.
Oh, Mama Gil, I'm sorry.
It's cool.
Turn that air off. Thank you. My name is Floyd Smith, and I've been doing community work for a long time. I'm in the senior citizen mold now, and I'm coming out for one reason. It's because of the crime in the streets, knuckleheads running around killing each other. I was housing director for Manchur. We rehabbed housing in Manchur, and we sort of stopped some of the gang wars back in the 70s, the 60s and 70s and 80s. I've been there, I was called to Columbus, Ohio, to do some consulting work for a couple of days, and I wound up staying there for eight years. I was with the Residence Judiciary Board dealing with people with, in public housing. We rehabbed Richard Allen, and we put young folks to work with contractors. We have a problem with the kids banging, banging out in the street, and nobody had a solution, and nobody asked the kids. Now, we got to get the young folk. I've been in situations, when I went down, when I first went down, Richard Allen worked for Gang Program, I walked out to management's office, the 12th and Poplar Gang was there. They said, who are you? I said, I run gang control. They said, we're going to F you up. I had to walk in the middle of them and point to the biggest guy and tell him, say, well, I'm going down, but you're going down with me. So I said, man, you got a lot of heart. Then I said, plus, I'm going to hire a couple of guys, and it turned into hiring me. We got to put these guys to work. Everybody can't get down. The ones that want to get to work, we got to do it. And the staff people know, Jamie, we need to build, I was born on 57th and Ludlow, in the house. Later on, right, I grew up down the bottom. Right, then, then when I went, the military came out, I moved to Manchur, right? So I've been full circle in a lot of ways, right? I was even in institution when I was in third grade. So my passion is about kids. Most of these kids are shooting, right? When they're on your side, they will kill for you, right? We got to, we got to connect with them. And so my way, I don't like a whole lot of meetings, I just came to this one today because I felt it was a good one, because I spent all my life in meetings, right? Most of the time in meetings, people yell, blah, 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 and everybody, I want you to hear me, nothing gets done. So it's two things from my, I'm trying to wrap it up, two things from my perspective we need to do. We need to build a high rise. When I was a kid, I walked from Ludlow Street to Market Street, I looked around, I seen all the buildings, I see PSSS building, we were not connected with that. We need to build a high rise like the pyramids of Egypt, everybody can point to. We put our people to work so everybody say, I was a part of that. And in that high rise, you have banks, insurance companies, all the tools that young entrepreneurs need, right? So that's my passion, that's what I'm working on. Number two, I've been in prison, I worked in prison. When I was young, I was in prison for a short period of time, I wound up working in prison, so I know a lot about prisons. We need to stop our kids from these misdemeanors going into these prisons, because all they do is go into prison, he's out, he's out on the corner, he's out on the corner doing a little drug thing, right? He go to prison, somebody put him down with a couple of keys and a crew, right? And now they out there slinging and killing. We need to have like a trans academy, intermediate academy, something in between that prison that these, that these people can go to, so they can get some tools, right? I'm not going to hold you up. So it's two things I'm working on, right? And I will meet with both of you councilpeople again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peace and love, family. I need to move this just a little bit. Thank you. I sat and heard everything everyone said, and as my sister talked about the summer, that's an issue for me. I'm very concerned about our children over the summer. I ride through the streets and I see what's closed. We have a school system where our children have been failed miserably for years, prior to COVID, and now. And so I stand here saying, we're going to have to, and I use this term, all hands on deck. Everybody's going to have to step in. We have young people leaving high school, and they're leaving, who are on third and fourth grade level. We have in 2024, after going through what we went through as a people being brought to this country, excuse me, we have gone full circle backwards, and it has to stop. We have to, we have to decide that enough is enough, and we have to declare, decree, and claim enough is enough. Is that what I say all the time? We have to. The spiritual power that we have that we're not using, I don't care what religion you're in, what you subscribe to, you better use it, because too many people are trying to claim our children, and we must reclaim our children. We must reconnect the ancestors. I'm telling you the way they told me, that we must remember. We must remember, reconnect, reclaim, and recommit. It's nothing complicated about it. We know what we used to do. And people can say, well, these children are coming from homes, they should be in a home. Well, how many of them don't have a home? How many are up and down the street hungry? How many are up and down the street looking for somebody to care? Somebody to say good morning, hi, how are you? You don't have to take them home with you, but just the same respect that we grew up with. My brother said he was born in a house, I was too, right on Udell Street, the unit block of Udell Street. Those that are, I don't care what part of the city you're from, we're being affected. When taxes go up, we're being affected. When we're paying taxes and it's going for the schools, and the schools are not giving us what we are supposed to have. and the schools are not giving us what we are supposed to have, there's a problem. I'm gonna just use one example, please, that people might not know. West Philadelphia was sold. The old West Philly, we went to, those of us that went. Those of us that went, it was sold. I don't know what the bids were for somebody bought it. And after they bought it, if I'm not mistaken, they asked for an amendment because they couldn't lease out the top floor, is what I was told. Instead of saying, "The school district," instead of saying, "We sold it to you," that's it, right? There was an amendment. But when I ride by, I see the lights up top where they said they couldn't lease it out. So it may be a law, but they're getting additional money because they're using the top. We have got to demand from the school district that they stop all these amendments. Because if a construction company says, "This is the amount we want," right? And you say, "Yes." And then they come back and say, "Well, we need some more money." Enough is enough. Hiring, there's a problem. If I can get three people hired in six weeks to a job, or four in six weeks to a job, and I don't work for the district, they can hire people. All right, all right, all right, wait a minute, let me say one more thing. Everybody, please, open your hearts to these children and stand up to the school district. My husband is back there. These pools need to be open. That is supposed to be part of the curriculum. And when people say, "This is a union town, we gotta go by the union," yet guess what? A lot of the folks in our communities are not in those unions. So the money is leaving our community. The jobs, many of the jobs are cleaning and security for our people. I know you...
Thank you, Mama Gail. We appreciate you.
Women, 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 women. Because y'all put me all the way at the end, and you do that. People do that all the time. Make sure I'm the last speaker.
Oh, you're not the last speaker. You're nowhere near the last speaker. That's why we...
Okay, I'm gonna sit down. But family, stand up for our children like you have never stood before, because they need to see you standing for them. Peace.
Hello, my name is Claire Newsome, and I'm here with Philly Thrive. And thank you so much for your support for home repairs. We heard Mr. Lanier earlier talk about investing in Build to Last, and I just wanted to put a finer point on why that's very smart for this round. So walk with me here. Our beautiful City Hall, a majestic building, was going to be torn down multiple times. Unfortunately, it's just too beautiful and majestic and strong for it to be torn down financially, in a financially feasible way. Unfortunately, for a lot of the older buildings in our city, that's not the case. They're not built like that, and it's time, it's time for a refresh. But just like our beautiful architecture here, the people who live in these homes are a key part of making Philadelphia what it is. And just like a lot of the comments we've heard today, apartment buildings, which some of my friends affectionately call, you know, the luxury condos, they call them adult dorms. Um, those aren't going to be able to house a family. They're not gonna be able to allow for children to stay, have a healthy place to go to school. And we really need to invest in repairing the homes that people already have, as well as what you said, reducing the tax burden that will come with that, and making sure people can stay in the communities. Repairing homes reduces gun violence on blocks. Repairing homes with Build to Last will make this city a leader in the future green economy, which is the future of our nation here. And I just wanna stand on one last thing. As you can see, I have my mask on. I have unfortunately come down with a sinus infection because of the allergy season that is becoming prolonged. And investing in green infrastructure, especially in homes, is the fastest way we can get to a greener future so that our people, especially our young children, can be outside in the beautiful spring weather without ending up like me. So thank you so much for all your support, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of money for Build to Last in the budget.
Ms. Taylor, and then Melina Williams.
Can I get on the list? Can I just get 30 seconds? Okay, real quick, she said, somebody said, "Go ahead." So real quick, I thank you for letting me speak. Our children are high. They are high. They are vaping at epidemic rates. These corner stores are selling tobacco, vape, electronic vapes, and marijuana pints to our children. And they can go play casino. No one's monitoring these stores. And the process for reporting them, my son included, and y'all know, most of you know me, okay? My son included, and I've heard your story about addiction, so, and in Kensington. I spoke to Dr. Jensen at CHOP, uh, PDS, at the Caribots. He said, "The gateway drug is not marijuana, it's not the weed, it's the tobacco." And tobacco is the gateway drugs. And the process for reporting them through the city is too slow, okay? You have to know the time, the date, the event, and all of this. You have to have evidence to report them. We need citywide legislation for these stores to be held accountable at a rapid pace. Because the reason, one of the reasons why it's so violent is because they're high, as young as eighth grade, okay? And the second thing is, is I know you passed the mask law, but I talk, I got my ear to the kids. They are scared to show their faces. They're scared to show their faces. So yes, you have the mask law, but you have to balance that as if they don't show their faces, they become vulnerable to violence on themselves. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Helping out children with autism. My son was diagnosed, my son was diagnosed at two years old. I'm testifying on the bill to help children with autism. It bothers me that the children don't have a place to be safe at parks. Definitely at, uh, the park at Malcolm X. It's no gates. My son can run off and get hit, or any child. 28 children that get hurt at parks, that's too high for me. 2,000 children die at parks, and that's too high for me. Our children needs to be safe. We don't have no rec center, we don't have no bathroom, no water, no anything for our children to be safe at parks. And children and parents that have autism children have to go to New York, New Jersey, and places to have their child to let out some energy. I feel like children and parents should have a place for their child to let out some energy. Our children, it's important that they have energy as soon as they go, that they don't be ashamed, don't be disrespected, or treated wrongly. We really need a change, and it needs to start with us and y'all.
Melina Williams. Ramire. Oh, Ramire, okay. Michelle Crouch. Rachel Rodriguez. Mr... Darren, come on, Darren, get in line, please. I see Rachel Rodriguez, and Nate Turner. You Nate?
Good evening to everyone, and to the panel. Thank y'all for all your awesome work. I'm here for a couple of things. One thing, I'm adding on about the, not only the stop and goes, but for the 24 hours with the drugs, there's drugs inside the stores. Many a days, my mother, who's 74 years old, goes out there and speaks with the children who's going to Broadham, I'm over in Southwest. They allow 14-year-olds and 12-year-olds to go and purchase the drugs, candy, before they go to school, and this week, and play illegal gambling 24 hours. Many a times, I went in there, I had a parent come there because the school called her. Broadham High School said that the kids behind the school, and they go there and purchase it. I witnessed it, I hopped out of situation, and the police officer told her, told the mom, "If you press charges, your daughter has to be locked up," to scare her. And the mom said, "Well, lock her up." So the other parent said, "Well, we don't want the child to have a record." So that was their response. To them, they lock up the man, and they let him go. I have video of that situation. Second, it's the childcare, daycare. We need more money. I'm a daycare owner, own five daycares. I had a daycare center, I blocked up 51st and Chestnut for 20 years. I had to close it because of COVID. I've been here for 20 years. And our funding is very low for childcare centers. Dogs get paid more money, people who watch dogs get paid more money than we get for childcare for watching children all single day. And not only that, for being a daycare owner, that the CCIS want us to watch children for 12 hours a day, and 12 hours and only get $40 for that one child. That's ridiculous. That's not fair. Now, you might say, "Okay, you'd be a star three and star four." That means that I have to fire existing workers who've been there for 20 and 15 years because someone 74 years old, like my mother, she was forced to go back for her education at that age. And that's not fair to star ones. They should also receive funding for people who is older, as seniors. They should also receive funding to help them out with childcare. Now, the parks, one, this is my last thing. Every park in Philadelphia should have a police officer. There's no excuse, there's no curfew in Philadelphia that I drove around town last night, I thought it was the summer, that kids was out buying water ice at 11 o'clock at night. I shouldn't be buying water ice, I should be in the diet. But they was out there eating water ice and prossels at 11 o'clock at night. No curfew. The parents have the kids out there at 8 and 9 o'clock, did not be held accountable for their actions, so allow their kids walk the street that time of night. All you see is the 24-hour stores and kids walking the street on bikes, 10 and 11 years old, on a school night. Parents should be held accountable, one. Two, reinforcing curfew, and the city of Philadelphia to stop all the crime. Once we do that, they eliminate the kids walking the street. Three, reinforce the face masks that the kids... I was so scared in the store one day, someone behind me with a face mask when it's like 75 degrees outside, like they get ready to rob the store. So that's it. We need police officers at every park, and a curfew for the parks to close, no later than 8 and 9 o'clock, every single day, with a police officer with three shifts to stop the shooting at the parks. Have a blessed night.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Hi, y'all. Thank you for your time. I'll be brief. Uh, my name's Rachel O'Hanlon Rodriguez. I've been a West Philly resident for 15 years, and I'm so honored by the community that has molded me. I live on a beautiful block with beautiful families, and everyone is a community here. I'm here to advocate against the 76ers arena as a West Philly resident because, at the end of the day, a lot of people mentioned a lot of the budget stuff, but budgets are also time and energy. You can't put that into numbers, but it's time and energy. And the community members of Chinatown, a historic neighborhood that has fought for their rights time and time again. If the city sides with corporations over our community members in Chinatown, what does that mean for West Philadelphia? I know the history of Black Bottom. I watched the University City Townhomes disappear, one of our last low-income apartment housings. That was an opportunity to listen to our community members, and I'm here to advocate to listen to our community members over corporations. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Timeout, timeout, bruh. I'm ready to cut the time now, with the hat on, like, you got a Dallas hat on, you gonna come to the meeting and try to get time? Give them 30 seconds. You got 30 seconds, bruh.
I'm not a pigeon fan.
You got 30 seconds, bruh.
Not a pigeon fan. Love the Sixers, release fly. What I'm here to talk about, 1996. I faced Nutter and a lot of people on the city council because they got scared. You know why they got scared? $1.5 billion was given by the NRA for people to turn their heads like this. People on council, congressmen, senators, this, that, and the other. I got a list of names, Philadelphia, California, all kinds of names, from senators, congressmen, this, that, and the other, taking that money from the NRA. And just saying, you know, "Look, I don't care, let him kill himself." The whole thing is, is that, there's some names in Philadelphia too, but some are redacted. I'm an engineer, computer engineer, so I can find out who you are. The whole thing is, when I do, you're not gonna really like me. I can guarantee that. The whole thing is, in 96, when Nutter did what he did, he turned Philadelphia into a police state. Took away jobs, this, that, and the other. Same thing's happening here. It's crazy, ridiculous. I got to go way down Maryland just to get a job. It's disgusting. I mean, hey, look, I'm gonna tell it like it is.
Thank you, bruh. You got that hat on though, but keep up the good work, bruh.
Like I said, I'm not a pigeon fan.
Keep up the good work though, good brother.
Good evening, everyone. And that nurse in the school, that young lady saved my life. So I know about that nurse, and it hurt me when y'all took the nurse out. But she's the reason I'm here. Second of all, I don't know, I don't like to speak, but I don't like to get on people's nerves. But I come out of a tough circle, a very good circle, very strong, working-class community. The young lady touched on it. The guy that ran the janitorial service in there sent his son downtown to take the test. When he went downtown, he called the guy up that was giving the test, and he told him, "If my son don't come in the top five, don't hire him." And my community has been waiting for years, like the young lady said, for a change. We had a place called, a community group called West Shore, that did a hell of a job. When that lady got Alzheimer's disease, that's what she had. She was still the president. That's when I decided to come in. Well, we were set up by Janie Blackwell. The young lady that took over West Shore worked in City Hall. So the problem that she's talking about didn't start with you. It didn't start with you. Okay, but now, what happens is, it's too many people in the community that can't do anything, and that's our problem. So the basis now is to put something back in our community. Now, I don't mind the new Africans. But if some other nationality is over in Africa killing blacks for them to get the deal, then y'all gotta cancel the deal. And what happens is that we don't know enough about Africa to make a decision. Right now, China's sinking, so it went into Africa because the country's sinking. It also went into Jamaica. It also went into Jamaica. It unleashed the whole land. Now, what we need to do is have international affairs too. And this, I gotta admit that. But this is what we need. We need high tech. And I'm at odds with the playground, which is 48th Street. Too much is low tech. Too much is low tech. We gotta bring it up. We can't have pantries and stuff like that.
We gotta wrap it up.
We gotta bring everything up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Janie B., Latrice Webb.
Sidney Brown.
Sidney Brown.
All right, thanks for sticking around this long, everyone. My name's Michelle Crouch. I'm here representing the Philly Rent Control Coalition and also here for climate justice. So I don't want to repeat too much. Mr. Charles Lanier and Ms. Newsome both spoke on a similar topic, but about the huge need for home repairs in the city. And just this massive need, not only for our homeowners, for our low and moderate income homeowners, but also for renters. You know, I've been up to Brith Shalom. I've seen the conditions up there. Our seniors should not be living in those conditions. And it, we need home repairs both for our 100-year-old roll houses and for our 60-year-old bigger apartment buildings. So I'm here today to advocate for funding for Built to Last. And, you know, I do see in here that there is, the home repair programs through PHDC are mentioned. I really appreciate that. But one reason we really want to advocate for Built to Last in particular is because it isn't just, you know, kind of patching the roof or replacing the water heater, but it's really making your whole home healthy and environmentally friendly, making utilities lower, and making sure our seniors and our kids and our vulnerable people will be okay when our temperatures are shooting up to, you know, 88 degrees in April. And yeah, there's just a massive need there. It's also gonna create a lot of jobs. So respectfully, we are requesting full funding for the Philadelphia Energy Authority and for Built to Last, $5 million.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Council President and Council Persons. I came in angry. I'm more disappointed as time has gone by. I'm going to read this so that I don't go off point. "I'm an angry, disappointed, tax-paying, property-owning, super voter in this third district. I've lived here over 60 years and voted in every election for over 45 years. Lives are on the line. Since October of 2022, we, the residents of Cobb's Creek, have proposed six specific detailed improvements to the major five-point intersection at 58th and Baltimore. Traffic calming and safety measures for this five-point intersection have been repeatedly ignored. Nothing has been done. Lives are on the line. After a six-month effort, mostly by myself, I finally received the official pin-dot accident report for the past 10 years. Lives are on the line. Today, today, I was outside and witnessed another near fatal accident that sent five people to the hospital. Lives are on the line. The 18th District, Commissioner Carlton Williams, former streets commissioner, now Philly Green Beautiful, Councilman Gordier's office, and Speaker Joanna McClinton, Speaker of the House of Representatives, God bless us all, have all been advised. Jesus knows that Cobb's Creek is a beautiful neighborhood. The intersection of 58th and Baltimore is a major deadly tragedy in the making. Lives are on the line. Why should we, me, an old gray-haired man, have to lay down in the middle of 58th and Baltimore calling TV stations to film concerned residents and we're laying in the middle of the street risking our lives for schoolchildren? A library that's being renovated? Uh, Blance Nixon, right? Two bus lines, a trolley line, and a regional train line? Senior citizens got seven seconds to cross the intersection. I counted, seven seconds. Trolley tracks, potholes, cars whizzing by, no dedicated turn signal, illegal turns, speeding, people running red lights. The city's solution, I was told, Councilman Kenyada Johnson, was a red light camera. That's good for the city. That's good, that's good for the city. It's good for the insurance companies. It's good for a whole lot of people unless you live there. It's a deadly intersection waiting to happen. Lives are on the line. We've submitted a five-point detailed solution. We, the concerned residents of Cobb's Creek, are being ignored. That's got to change, gonna change. We will not be ignored. Lives are on the line. Please, please, please.
Hi, my name is Sidney Brown and I'm here representing the 1400 block of Graceberry Avenue. We have been having an ongoing situation with 1427 Graceberry Avenue with illegal cars. We had a community meeting. That community meeting led to nothing positive. Officer Duffy's response was going over to ask those individuals for their names or ID or why they're there was harassment. That evening after our community meeting on April 10th, I returned home. I was assaulted again, threatened with a bullet for the second time. Walked, they walked into my driveway and pushed me down. Again, they're still operating illegally, but it's okay for them to threaten us, stop traffic. Every night, it's like somebody's poking their horn because they can't get by because they're blocking the one-way street with their cars. Why is it that the 1400 block of Graceberry Avenue, South 48th Street, Pasco Avenue is constantly being ignored? It's like we're not important.
Where's this address at again?
1400 block of Graceberry Avenue, across from the 48th Street Recreation Center. So what's gonna be, where's the budget to get these cars off the street to stop people from squatting, bringing their illegal activities to that neighborhood? And why, if that incident happened, because I did email Alexis so she knew about the incident, why was it not important to have Mayor Parker walk that neighborhood that Saturday when she walked within Avenue?
Well, not with the control of Mayor Parker. I mean, Mayor Parker, you would have to reach out to Mayor Parker to get Mayor Parker to come. However, we are aware of this issue. I know Officer McDuffie was trying to get them in line that they need to visit and get, um, PDA, sorry, Department of Safety and licensed inspection.
So they were at the meeting, so, you know.
We can follow up to determine what happened at the meeting and what we can do as a next step. And just to let you know, we're dealing with a number of these issues. And it can take sometimes to get them either in line or shut down, but we will continue from the beginning. I don't know what hap, I would like to represent.
So we had the meeting on April 10th and nobody from your team fills you in on that meeting?
I would like to check in differently and back to you to determine what we can do as a next step.
Okay, so my question again, why is it that area is not important? I feel like it's not important to your office or the 18th District.
I think, well, I would say what I would say means that we're trying to address the issue of getting that call back.
So I asked for patrol cars. They only come now because I guess the people in the cars are, I don't know if they're calling because they can't get through and they're causing disturbance with them as well. Other residents are calling now and they're still operating.
Okay, please allow me to, I can call up this tomorrow, but I can just do check in before that I can have a more temporary to think about what we need to do.
So this will be tomorrow, what time? Because this needs to be done, like.
Can y'all have a sidebar conversation, ma'am?
Thank you.
I'm gonna be fast. I know how to follow rules, I promise.
Yeah, we have to get out of the building anyways.
And I know you guys have to be tired because I'm exhausted and I worked from, hey. My name is Latrice Webb and I'm the founder of The Elevation Project. We're a reentry program in West Philadelphia, but we serve community members from all across the city. I have two questions and they're specific questions about the budget. I am a part of the Promise, the Promise Philadelphia's funding that they receive from the city. I hosted three of the largest expungement clinics that the Promise had and I had the smallest budget. That being said, so I had 299 people meet with a lawyer in the last two fiscal years with our final clinic for this fiscal year being in June. But it doesn't matter because there are 30,000 expungement applications sitting in the court system. I just want to mention that so when you're looking at the DA's budget, he has promised that he will hire more lawyers to be able to look at those expungements. That's 30,000 people. But when I get my other 100 on June 29th, it'll be 30,100. And it does no good if people come out, try to change their lives and then their application is just sitting on somebody's desk. That's the first thing. Is I keep hearing conversations about public safety and everybody always talks about public safety. I dragged my five-year-old here tonight to just say this one thing. We always talk about public safety and we talk about the jail. I see that there's a budget to get the roof and all of that, that's nice. But if I throw any of you in a cage and leave you there for 72 hours and then expect you to come out and act like what we call a proper citizen, none of you would be able to do it. We cannot judge the young people who are sitting in cells 23 and 1 at the Juvenile Justice Center or the adults who are doing it on State Road if we're not providing them proper programming. They don't eat proper food. They're not, they don't, I just was at PIC for the ed. They have no access to the gym. They're not able to use the gym at the, at PIC. So you can't put a person in a cage and then tell them to come out and act humane and then say, "We're fixing the public safety problem." If you want to fix public safety, my suggestion is that you start with the jails and the reentry programs and that they're funded correctly. You guys have a good night.
Hi, I'm here. So as you said, my name is Salima Shuler. I'm actually one of the board members of Overbrook Monarch View Sports. We operate out of 65th and Calhoun Hill and have.
You're a Shuler?
Shuler Jenkins.
You're part of a Shuler family?
I am. But my mouth isn't quite as big yet. I'm getting there. But today, I'm here on behalf of the Overbrook Monarch View Sports. We're an organization that's been here for 20 years and we have operated out of 65th and Calhoun Hill, helping our youth do sports, do mentorship, do study halls. I am here because I understand that the mayor has allocated a significant amount of funds to youth sports. We do want to make sure that the funding process, we found in the past has been very difficult to get our smaller organizations funding. And I guess we would, we consider a grassroots organization, but we work hard. Know we're not always front and center. We don't often come to these meetings, but we work with the children every single day. This year, unfortunately, we've had a lot of youths that's been killed and so we have had to start our programs early, actually an entire month early than we usually would. And we are completely ran by volunteers. We work full-time jobs, so we need funding to help with these children. Unfortunately, our libraries are not open late enough to help with study halls and things of that nature. Our recreation centers are not, don't have enough staff to be open so we can use them. We are tutoring children outside. We want to make sure that the funding is looking at our resources. We know that a lot of the rec centers are closed for rebuild, so the ones that are left open, if we can please look at that and give us enough funding to operate appropriately. Because A, we're gonna have extra kids and B, we just need things that, you know, bathrooms, enough lights, basic things that we just don't have. So we are asking you to please make sure you think of us when you are allocating the fundings and the funding process because it seems to be very difficult. So I've done it myself, the paperwork. So you spoke of that earlier, you know, getting through all the paperwork process. You guys will be looking at that a little more closely. We appreciate that. So please, yeah, I just have one last question. One last question. Because a lot of people were talking about children with autism. So that is very near and dear to our program. I am an autistic mom. My child has come, has been through the Philadelphia school system. He has also played sports in organizations that are not necessarily typical for kids on the spectrum. So we wanted to make sure that we are also allocating funds so we can service those children because they're here in our organizations and we want to be able to have the right resources for them. One last question. The Buy Back the Block session. When you did the Buy to Back the Block, Buy to Block session, when is the next one?
Am I good to proceed?
Yes.
All right, good evening, council members. I first want to thank you for still being here at this late hour. I recognize that you all have hearings tomorrow and the next day, so I appreciate it. But I'll keep it brief. The spirit moved me today to talk because I heard a lot of people talk about our young people today. So to be very transparent, I'm the Director of Parent Advocacy and Engagement at Children First. I'm also a proud board member of Lift Every Voice. But I'm here to talk to you today about something that was so powerful last year that with the partnership of the Office of Trauma Intervention, Trauma Intervention and Prevention at the School of Sugar Philadelphia, was able to do Camp Akili. So I want to talk to you about that because if you all increase the property tax share by three percentage points, I think we can do more of this work. So let me begin. My name is Inella Ray. I'm a proud product of the Philadelphia Public School System, a vicious advocate for children and youth and a Philadelphia resident deeply invested in our youth's future. I have the honor of serving as a camp coordinator of Camp Akili Philly, where I witnessed the beautiful unfolding of what happens when we invest and center black children's healing and our own. I stand here today to urge you to increase the property share tax to 58% from 55%, which would generate 100 million extra dollars for our public schools. Across the school year, 197,000 students walk into our schools with backpacks, the invisible kind, with their burdens. Many of them carry very heavy loads that should never be carried by children or youth, yet the fact remains that they do. The load is disproportionately felt in communities that look like mine's, ones that like West Philly, that have been divested from and in many instances abandoned, and making it all the more clear while we're in a state of crisis. Let's be honest, those communities are overwhelmingly black and it's not because we are inherently misguided, deficient, or lazy. It is instead because like many of us in this room, they need the investment, the real kinds that believes in their potential and fights to ensure that they get what they need holistically. I deeply believe Camp Akili is a part of that equation. At Camp Akili, I got to see the evolution of what happens when you create a space that is filled with commitment, love, and mutual accountability. And what unfolds is kids are given space to be kids. Unfortunately for black children in the city, that is often not a reality. They don't get to be free because their imagination and their bodies are overpoliced in schools and in communities. Well, Camp Akili provided something different. It gave room to black youth to learn about where they come from, the significance of their place and space in Philly, and the importance of their leadership and connection to their community and practical ways to steward their own healing and others. Thank you for allowing me this space to speak and I encourage you all to use this precarious time and invest in our kids. I think you heard from all these people in this room that they need it. And like you, there are people to invest, so I hope you take this opportunity to make the real investment of 100 million dollars that our kids need. to make the real investment of a hundred million dollars that our kids need.
Alright, uh, thank you so much. Um, greetings to all of council that are still here. And for those of you that are still here in the building, um, wow, a lot has been said tonight, so I'm not going to talk about anything that anybody else talked about, okay? Um, what I want to address, um, is the proposed one hundred million dollar plus investments for, well, the six hundred million that I want to talk about for public safety and where the money falls in for like the police department. Do you know how much is going to the police department?
One second.
Okay.
CFO is going to say.
So, the six hundred million is over five years.
Mm-hmm.
Increased investment annually, the, uh, police budget is over seven hundred million dollars.
Okay.
Annually.
Okay. So, with that, okay, I have a few concerns with that um, because we know like throughout this country, many cities want to defund the police. Um, so, I don't want to necessarily have the police defunded, okay? Um, but what I want to see is more police, actually policing, more police protecting and serving, which they're not doing in this city. Um, I want to see police out patrolling in the communities to make people feel safe again. Um, and so, to increase funding for the police, I don't really want to see that because right now, um, when I'm out and about, um, you know, I'm a journalist and all that stuff, and I'm the queen of justice, everybody, but anyway. I, you know, do a lot of videos. And when I see police downtown and even in certain areas throughout the city, I see them all the time commuting or communing together, like they're having a social hour while they're on the clock. And I mean like five and six of them just standing around talking and not paying attention to what's going on right on the streets instead of city. Um, I see those that are on horses, on bikes, the bikes are sitting, and they're all standing around talking. And yet, things are happening around them, and they're not paying attention. Underground, the subways, the Market Frankfurt Line, down at Fifteenth and Market at City Hall, they are under there just standing around talking, and people are going around and doing all types of things, and they're not noticing anything that's happening. And so, I have a problem with that. Um, so I think we should get rid of the police that are standing around doing nothing. They're not fighting crime, but they're letting crime take place right under their noses. They, if something needs to happen, they need to be held accountable for that. And now, my biggest issue right now with what's happening with the police department is like, how can the city? Now, this is not really the city's issue, but this is an issue with the officer Ryan Pannell, who some of you may not know about, but he murdered someone two year, uh, back in two thousand seventeen, David Jones. David Jones' family has not received justice because Ryan Pannell is out on the streets again. And then last Thursday, uh, arbitration hearing, they reinstated Officer Pannell with full back pay. And also, they gave him a seniority position, like a slap in the face to the family of David Jones. And I don't think that's fair. And when the city has money to go ahead and like pay him all his back pay, but yet, when people are wrongly incarcerated and then they get out of prison and are exonerated, the city cannot find money to help these exonerees get back on their feet, but yet, they can allow this cop to be reinstated with full back pay and men and women that are wrongly incarcerated come out with absolutely nothing? I think that's a grave injustice. So, I would like to see something. If it's not this year, next year, but, uh, 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 in the budget, something for exonerees because they need help when they come home. Because in the state of Pennsylvania, everybody, we're just one of eleven states in this country that do not compensate exonerees. And I think that's a disgrace. Yeah, that's definitely a disgrace. So, we need to fix that.
We need to wrap up the meeting, but we appreciate you and your advocacy.
Okay, well, one more thing I want to say because everybody else had so much time to talk, okay? And I'm like last on the podium, but.
You gotta be quick.
Um.
That, okay, the ten-year tax abatement that the city is still giving to people that purchase these homes that are built by these developers, um, when are you guys going to do away with that? Because you cry about money, but yet, you're giving these homeowners ten years where they don't have to pay any taxes while everybody else's taxes are being raised and skyrocketed. So, that needs to be addressed. I want to see that done away with. It was supposed to be done away with before, but yet, city council still has that ten-year tax abatement. Alright, I'm Dr. Chinchilla J., y'all.
Thank you, Chinchilla. Ah, hello. Hello, uh, council people. I'm just happy to be, have another day. Just, I don't care how long I have to stay in the wait. Another day is a blessing. I like to thank God for giving me, um, the ability to be here today. Um, I wanted to thank you for bringing the power of your office here. Um, I go way, a long way back with you. You know, to see you rise up to the top is really commendable. I was proud to see you and your family and your sons on stage that day. I haven't been down to city council lately because I've been working and with COVID, it just threw my rhythm off. But it's always a pleasure to see you. And I'm sure Councilman, um, our former Hardy Williams, the late, great Lucian Blackwell will be proud to see you in that office. I really admire that. I'd like to thank you, my councilwoman Jamie Gutierrez, for all you've done for being among the people, having this. I'd like to thank all the other council people, and I'd like to thank the former councilwoman Janie Blackwell for all she did to make things happen. Um, I wanted to just say that the budget process, uh, the budget process is a pivotal aspect of organizational planning, shaping the roadmap for financial allocations and resource management. It serves as a foundation for strategic decision-making and goal achievement. Accountability among directors, managers, board members across all agencies of receiving financial assistance from the city is crucial. It ensures transparency, responsible stewardship of public funds, and alignment with community needs and priorities. Accountability from these agencies and others, the Philadelphia Industrial Development Office, Capital Projects Office, the Streets Department, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Redevelopment Authority. You mentioned them in your budget. They're going to get millions of dollars. What we'd like to see is accountability of the Board of Directors. I believe the officer, the head of the Redevelopment Authority, the Land Bank, and PHDC serve at the pleasure of the Council President's office. We just need some accountability. I'd like to thank you for, at least the former Council President's office. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. We look forward to working with you as we go forward. Thank you.
We want to thank everybody for, let me ask y'all a question real quick. Well, not a question. Give yourselves a round of applause, right? It's nine o'clock on a Monday evening. Uh, and at the end of the day, it's about neighbors being concerned, who government officials accountable. We work for you, it's not the other way around. So, we're very, very aware of that. Just want to thank you for coming. And I know some people may have some extra questions they want to follow up with. Listen, I always like to say rabbits on a microphone or pulling somebody to the side, you can talk to your elected official. But we have to wrap up. We pulled this building about an hour and a half ago. But, uh, we thank everybody for being here, and thank you very much.
Jamie, you want to wrap and say something?
Nope.